Does anyone else hear that? Okay, thanks.
That feedback could be related to a device too close to a speaker. Just to let you know, so if someone has their phone right next to a speaker, that could be where that feedback's coming from.
Thank you, Tom.
You're welcome.
Good evening, everybody.
We're just seconds away from 5:30, so we'll, as soon as this clock on the laptop goes five, colon, three, zero, we'll start.
Oh, the anticipation.
There's a lot to anticipate, but that's one of them. It's 5:30 PM. Today is Tuesday, December 29, 2020. The Committee of the Home is called order. Good evening. And let's start with the Fledge of Allegiance. Stand if you can. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Clerk, will you go through the roll call?
Will do. Chairman? Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderwoman Turner.
Here.
Alderman Fulgenzie.
Here.
Alderman Proctor.
Here.
Alderwoman DeSensio.
Present.
Alderman McMenamin.
Here.
Alderwoman Conley.
Present.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, a quorum is present.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the December 8, 2020 committee meeting, a minute?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
There's, there's many motions for that and a, and a seconds. And so all those in favor, say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Normally, we would have an OBM contract report. It was distributed December 10, but I, but it did not get to our city clerk. So I'd just remind our OBM manager and our city council coordinator to include our clerk in the distribution of the Office of Budget and Management Contract Report so we can get it on the agenda, so it's listed, so we all know what's coming up. So let's just take that for, let's move that to the next committee meeting and distribute the OBM contract report. There's maybe eight items on the contract report, and so we can address that at the next Committee of the Home meeting. We've got, later on during old business, we'll have some discussion regarding the city grants and the city residential approval process for assistance with rent. For now, right now, we'll go and list the, we'll get into the ordinances and then go back to the old business when we get there. The ordinances tabled or remaining in committee include one from 2017, that's 103, one ordinance from calendar 2018, which is ordinance 110. We've got two ordinances from calendar 2019, which is 008 and 430. And then, all the remaining ordinances being held in committee are from the calendar year, this year, 2020, which is 067, 153, 207, 273, 314, 315, 346, 378, 379, 380, 404, 406, 442, and 464. Are there any motions to move any of those ordinances? Seeing none, we will move to the ordinances for committee consideration, beginning with the utility ordinances. Mr. Clerk?
CWLP, 2020, 499. An ordinance accepting bids and authorizing contract UE 21-10-45, growth street truck bay roof repair with Hanson Robinson Company in an amount not to exceed $89,690 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent?
Second.
Alderman Redpath for consent, several seconds. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any against, the ayes have it.
2020, 500. An ordinance accepting proposal number UE 21-17 with Schweitzer Engineering Technologies Incorporated for sonnet replacement system in an amount not to exceed $600,257.56 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent?
Consent.
Second.
There's a motion by Redpath for consent, and several seconds. Any discussion? There's discussion by Alderman Redpath.
Doug Brown, are you on here? Doug Brown or anybody from CWLP?
Yes, I'm here.
Could you, could you tell us a little bit about this, the, the sonnet networking, please?
Yeah, it's basically our SCADA system, which is the, it's for the supervisory and control and data acquisition network for basically controlling the electrical grid. It's basically for high-speed relay protection. It basically monitors all our substation and equipment and tie line, data exchange, that kind of thing. So it's basically, the system currently is about 23 years old. It's kind of out of date. There's parts that are becoming unavailable for replacement, so it's time that we have to upgrade it.
So, so this is an upgrade at $600,000?
Correct.
It's not a complete overhaul?
Yes.
Did you hear me?
What was the question, I think?
So, so this is a, just an overhaul, it's not a complete replacement?
No, it's a replacement. It's an upgrade.
Okay.
That's all I have, thank you.
Director Brown, thank you. Alderman Redpath, is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Next ordinance?
2020, 501. An ordinance authorizing a contract amendment and additional funding in an amount not to exceed $148,200 with Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly Incorporated for engineering services for the filter systems at the water purification plant for a total amount payable of $1,600,758 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent?
Second.
There's a motion for consent and a second. Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 The ayes have it.
2020, 502. An ordinance authorizing the purchase of replacement valve actuators for Unit 4 from Valve Ray Conditioning Service Company in an amount not to exceed $54,575 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent?
Second.
Motion for consent by Redpath, many seconds in discussion. There being none, all those in favor, say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
2020, 503. An ordinance authorizing an agreement with Wood Group USA Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $115,000 for Phase 2 of low-load study for Unit 4 at the Dolman Power Station for a total amount not to exceed $139,990 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent?
Second.
Motion for consent by Redpath, several seconds. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor, say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Going on to public safety. Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you. 2020, 514. An ordinance authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with the Board of Trustees of the University of Illinois for COVID-19 testing support for first responders for the Police Department and Fire Department.
Move to consent? Second.
There's a motion for consent by Alderwoman Conley, and several seconds. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, just real briefly, I just, Alderman Donlin here, I just want to say good work to the Fire Department and the mayor, anybody else who's been involved with this. This is going to be, going to be a good thing. I know they've reached out to some other communities throughout the state, and I'm glad to see this moving along. Thank you.
That's right. I think this is the saliva test. It's, the results are almost immediate, so that means that the, anyone who is infected can immediately inform all others, and we can keep our infection rates down within public safety. Any, any further discussion? An additional question on this, there's no fiscal analysis or cost. Do we know what kind of a financial agreement we reach with the University of Illinois Springfield?
Alderman, last I was told it was $30 per test. Our plan, as of right now, is to test everybody once a week. We also have the By Next Now test that, until we get this fully in place, that we can do as well, and those were free through the, through the county, but those are, those are not quite as quick and as easy. We, we figure that it's probably going to be somewhere around 4,500 to 6,000 a week to get this, this testing, which would give us, you know, if we allocated about $100,000, that would give us, you know, several months. That number will go down on cost per week as we have vaccinations that are, that are coming online, and we have the majority of the Fire Department that has said that they're going to get those. So obviously, as those vaccinations occur, our weekly cost on testing will go down because those, those people will not have to be tested after they've had the, the second, the second shot over a period of days.
So, are we appropriating a certain amount of money? Is that in the ordinance? I don't see that, and maybe I missed it.
Mr. Chairman, Corporation Counsel, it would be appropriate to go ahead, and this was discussed actually earlier, to go ahead and not to exceed $100,000. So if we want to amend the ordinance to indicate in both title, and then we'll make the correction in the body, we did not have that information when the ordinance was drafted. So if you would like, it's certainly appropriate to make an amendment that says not to exceed $100,000.
Okay, and do we have a line item that we're drawing from?
It is, it was my understanding that it would be from the second, or the plan was to use the second set of the CARES funding, the 750, that the city's in the process of receiving.
Could you repeat that, please?
Yeah.
Sorry, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, no.
Sorry. It was my understanding, it certainly can be correct on this, but it was my understanding that the decision was to go ahead and plan on using part of the new $775,000 that the city is receiving as, under that, the CARES Act funding, so it would be designated as coming from that fund.
Okay. I think the, I believe Alderman Redpath is going to make the amendment to, for a dollar amount, and with...
Well, I, I was going to ask the same question you asked Alderman McMenamin about the funding source, so I'm satisfied with that, but I, I will make the motion that we amend the ordinance to reflect not to exceed $100,000.
I'll second that amendment. And Alderman, if you want to make sure, we will make sure to get the correct account information included in the body.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor, say aye or raise hands.
Aye.
All right, the ayes have it. Thank you.
Public Works, 2020, 504. An ordinance authorizing execution of an agreement with Hanson Professional Services Incorporated for construction engineering services for the Cook Street and South Grand Underpasses project in an amount not to exceed $1,310,515 for usable Segment 5 of the Springfield Rail Improvements Project, MFT Section Number 19-00488-00-BR, and Project Number ZOBP 501 for the Office of Public Works.
Move to consent?
Second.
I believe that was a motion for consent by possibly Alderman Hanauer, and there are a couple of seconds. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, Alderman Gregory, I just got a real quick question for Nate, if he's on. So, on this, I know this is not the actual work, but on the Cook Street part, or the South Grand part of it, where towards 11th Street, we have some of that section, or somebody does, has that section roped off with chains with no trespassing. After this is completed, years down the line, it's from my understanding that the railroad would only take up so much of that, and then the rest comes back to the city, or, or will the railroad improvements for that section take up that whole corner? Do we know?
We do not need that area for the rail project. It's basically between 9th and 11th Street. We may utilize that as a laydown area, as part of this project, and then we can either declare that area surplus property if we, if we like to after the property.
Well, I got some thoughts. Look, look, okay, I just, I was, I was just wondering. All right, I appreciate you.
You're welcome.
This is Alderman McMenamin. Nate, since you're on, a question. So these, both of these are improvements to the existing underpasses. For example, the underpass now at South Grand does not have a real friendly pedestrian passageway. Will the improvements be comprehensive to take, to address those kinds of issues?
There will be some minimal, there will be some minimal work underneath the underpass, but a majority of the work's on the side, and then reconstructing the... We'll be putting in two new bridges, obviously, for the, for the NS tracks as well as the Union Pacific track. And there, there will be some, some minor pedestrian improvements, and we will be replacing the retaining walls as well along the, along the, some of the laydown and laying back the slope along the Cook Street underpass.
So considering the amount of money, because later on, we've got another ordinance, this is just for the engineering part of it, I, I hope we can do as much as we can, given the amount of money that's being spent for the improvements of those two underpasses. Nate? Any further discussion? All those in favor placing this on the consent agenda, say aye.
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 Or raise hands. The ayes have it. Thank you. Next ordinance?
2020, 505. A supplemental resolution notifying the State of Illinois Department of Transportation that motor fuel tax funds in an amount of $17,900,000 may be used for the Cook Street and South Grand Avenue underpasses for the Office of Public Works.
Motion for consent? Second.
There's a motion for consent by Alderwoman Turner, and a second by Alderwoman Conley. Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor, say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Any notes? The ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, if I can, I would like to make a motion for Agenda Items 2020, 506 and 507 to be done through an omnibus vote.
Second.
All right, all those in favor of omnibus for 506 and 507, say aye.
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 The ayes have it. Go ahead, Mr. Clerk.
Yes. 2020, 506. A resolution notifying the State of Illinois Department of Transportation that motor fuel tax funds in the amount of $325,818.38 may be used for preliminary engineering services by the Lawrence Avenue Intersection Improvements at Walnut Street and MacArthur Boulevard Project, MFT Section 20-00494-00-SB for the Office of Public Works. 2020, 507. An ordinance authorizing execution of agreement with Furman Engineering for preliminary engineering services for the Lawrence Avenue Intersection Improvements at Walnut Street and MacArthur Boulevard Project, MFT Section Number 20-00494-00-SB in an amount not to exceed $325,818.38 for the Office of Public Works.
Move to consent? Second.
There's a motion for consent by Alderwoman Conley, and a second by DeSensio. Any discussion? Alderwoman Conley, and then Alderwoman DeSensio.
Thank you, Alderman McMenamin. Director Bottom, could we, you just give, this intersection obviously is, is a huge issue of concern from Ward 8 and Ward 6, clearly. Could you give us an update on the timeline? What's, what's going to be happening here? What our timeline is for improvements to this intersection? When people can expect to see some improvements in that area?
You're correct. Both intersections have been problem intersections. Over the last five years, we had 142 crashes at the intersection of Lawrence and MacArthur, and 48 crashes at Lawrence and Walnut. The primary crash types have been turning movements, and that is why we're proposing on constructing dedicated left turn lanes and installing flashing left arrows. Obviously, with approving this contract, we'll be able to begin the engineering, and we hope to wrap up the plans in approximately a year. And then aggressively, we're trying to hit a March of 2022 letting, but that depends upon reviews. Since we're utilizing HSIP funds, we're going to need IDOT reviews, and then we also are going to need to acquire some land, which could delay the process. But aggressively, we're trying to hit a March of 2022 letting, and then construct it that summer and into the fall of 2022.
Thank you. And I know you, you hear as many complaints about those intersections as anyone else, but I just, it's, it's nice to know there's a light at the end of this tunnel, because those are problematic, to say the least.
That's correct. And then also, just to add on that, we are planning on doing the Walnut Street improvements as part of the road diet. PH Rotten was awarded that contract in September, and we should have the pre-construction meeting in January, which will put that, make that a three-lane section with, with bike lanes and sidewalk, and modernizing the signals.
Great news. Thank you very much, Director.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Alderwoman DeSensio?
I just wanted to say thank you to Director Bottom for all of his work on this, as he just outlined this, these are both problem intersections. I literally sit in my living room or in my home office and wait for the sirens to stop, and then the calls start coming in about the current crash at Lawrence and MacArthur. Usually, usually the, the late night ones are at Walnut and Lawrence. So, thank you very much. I appreciate all of your work on this, and looking forward to see what, what, what change it affects.
You're welcome. And actually, the credit to TJ Hebsizer, Trap Engineer, did an excellent job writing the application for the HSIP fund to leverage the 1.579 million, but I will pass it on. Thank you for the compliment.
Thanks to TJ.
Chair, I think, I think Alderman McMenamin may have some audio issues, is that correct?
Yeah, it says connecting to audio.
Right. Can you hear us, Alderman?
Take over, Alderwoman Conley.
Hey, I've got a gavel right here.
Get up and go, girl.
We'll give him one more minute here.
He's calling in.
Okay, give him another 30 seconds. We did, are you back, Alderman?
Chairman, are you back? Alderwoman, we have, we have a motion and a second on 506 and 507.
Okay. Until Alderman McMenamin is able to reconnect to audio, I will take over as vice chair. We'd actually talked about this. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Ayes have it. Clerk, we go to the next ordinance, please.
Thank you. 2020, 508. An ordinance authorizing execution of an agreement with the State of Illinois Department of Transportation, IDOT, usable Segment 5 of the Springfield Rail Improvement Project for the Cook Street and South Grand Underpasses for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent? Second.
Okay, we have a motion for consent and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
2020, 509. An ordinance authorizing relocation expenses in the amount of $971,924.25 for the relocation and personal property located on parcel SR 0114, the Salvation Army relating to the Springfield Rail Improvement Projects for the Office of Public Works.
Move to consent?
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead, Alderman Redpath.
Mayor or somebody, could you tell us relocation expenses for $971,000? Is that a purchase of property in addition to the relocation expenses?
Director Bottom can cover, but it's relocation expenses of the ARC.
Yeah. Yeah, so we have to follow the Uniform Relocation Act. $25,000 of the dollars was for re-establishment expenses, $2,500 was for searching, and then there were, that meant for, it was $504,000 approximately, which was the lowest bid for, for actual moving expenses. There were also some specialty items that needed to be moved, and based upon our preliminary estimate, it was $350,000, and then $2,000 for dumpsters, and we also built into 10%, contingency. We will only pay for what they move and the actual reimbursement expenses, but that's our estimate pursuant to the Uniform Act.
I'll move to put this on the debate agenda, Madam Chairman.
Okay. Motion for debate, and is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion, any further?
I thought there was already a motion and a second for consent.
That was Alderman Redpath.
I'll pull my motion. I'll pull my motion.
Okay.
Sorry, Ralph, I thought, I thought that was Alderman Redpath who'd made the motion.
Well, I made the initial motion for consent, I think, but I can, I don't know who, I'll pull mine to go to debate.
I've made the second motion, Madam Chairman.
Wonderful, okay. Any more discussion on this? Motion is for debate. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on.
2020, 510. An ordinance authorizing an agreement with the State of Illinois Department of Transportation, IDOT, the Norfolk Southern NS to reimburse Norfolk Southern $5 million for their costs and allow the city's contractor to work on the NS property for usable Segment 5 of the Springfield Rail Improvement Project for the Office of Public Works.
Motion for consent? Second.
Motion for consent and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Vote aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
General City Business, 2020, 511. An ordinance appointing Grant Barksdale to the Deferred Compensation Committee.
Move for consent?
I believe that has to go on debate.
On debate, move to debate.
Okay.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
2020, 502.
Alderman McMenamin back?
Authorizing payment?
No.
You missed him, Ralph?
No, go ahead.
Can you hear me? I'm back.
Oh, okay, Alderman McMenamin. I will...
Vice Chair, Vice Chair Conley, I am deeply in gratitude. Thank you so much, and we all got to be prepared for this. Have your vice chair always, you know, ready to go, and this is great training, but we're actually real time, so, Mr. Clerk, please proceed.
2020, 512. An ordinance authorizing payment of $42,634.90 to Jeffrey Coker, a Springfield police officer, to settle a workman's compensation claim for case number 17-WC-28803.
Move for consent?
Move for consent.
Move for consent. Second. There's a motion for consent by Alderman Redpath and several seconds. Any discussion? There be none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any against? The ayes have it.
2020-513, an ordinance to decrease the number of Class A liquor licenses by one due to closure of business by Fun Time Gaming LLC, doing business as Pops Lounge, located at 723 North Grand Avenue East.
Move for consent?
Second.
There's a consent by Redpath and a second by Descenso. Any discussion? There be none, all those in favor, say aye. Any against?
Aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Noted on the present. 2020-515, an ordinance authorizing acceptance and execution of grant number 173800451 in an amount of $136,277 from the Illinois Department of Public Health for funding of the AmeriCorps III and authorizing a supplemental appropriation in an amount of $160,082 for the Office of Planning and Economic Development.
Move for debate.
Move to, no, move to debate.
Second.
I believe there's a motion for debate by Descenso and a second by Alderman Turner. Any discussion? Alderman Turner, and then Alderman Donald.
Okay, this is a program that Alderman Proctor and I worked really, really hard to bring to the city, and it's been here for, you know, I think, three years. And after the initial year, we have not heard much about it, so I would really like to have some kind of a report or update about, you know, what, what, how the program has progressed over the last several years, how many AmeriCorps students we've had, where they were located, that kind of thing, because it's, it's almost just been kind of radio silence after we hear that we have been awarded the grant. It's a, it's a wonderful program, and like I said, Alderman Proctor and I worked really hard to make it happen, but I would just appreciate some periodic updates regarding the program.
Alderman Turner, this is Valie Azal. This year was a challenging year, but I very much appreciate your concern and wanting something about that, and I will have that for you as quickly as I possibly can. We did lose a lot of our AmeriCorps students this year because they were unable to serve due to COVID, but I will get you those exact numbers, and then we are gearing up for, starting the new year on January 4th. We're going to have orientation, and we'll, we'll get your report.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we had a motion, was that for consent or debate?
That's on debate.
Okay, there's a motion for debate and a second, and we've had discussion. Alderman Donald?
Yeah, just real quick, I appreciate Alderman Woman, Alderman Turner's question about the update, that, that's what I was, one of the questions I was going to ask. My other question is, why does it on the agenda say that it's up for emergency passage?
Well.
I mean, is it, is it time sensitive?
Oh.
Just curious.
I'm sorry, I had stepped back. I apologize, Alderman. Yes, it was time sensitive. We were supposed to get this contract in October, and we had interviewed for everyone to be hired by, through October, and they did not get us the contract until about a week or a week and a half ago. And so, we had asked for it to be on emergency passage so we could hire our students and start on that January 4th deadline.
Okay, but just for clarity, it's not on emergency passage, so?
No, it's no longer on emergency passage.
Okay, thank you, just, thank you, just wondering.
So, thank you, Director Yazel. Any further discussion on ordinance 515? There be none, all those in favor for the debate agenda, correct? Say aye, or lose your hand. The ayes have it.
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it. We're now moving on to unfinished business. I've got a couple of items that I wanted to bring to everyone's attention. The first, we had quite a discussion last week regarding the firefighters' overtime, and something we didn't mention during our last discussion was that when we went into that huge amount of overtime last year with our firefighters, they exhausted their line item for that spending, and they never came back to the council in timely manner to get approval to spend more money for their overtime. And so, that's called in a misappropriation of funds. They came in with a request for funds after the money had already been spent over budget. So, that's one of the reasons why, Alderman Redpath, you asked a good question about the spending amounts for the tests on the COVID test for the U of I. You always want a spending amount on these ordinances, and then, this goes to Director McCarty. If you see a line item that's getting overspent, you've got to bring it to the city council's attention right then and there so we can address the issue. So, that's just one unfinished business item. Then the second was, we had a discussion, and I'll allow Alderman Hanar to speak also on the, after the second item, we had a discussion regarding crime last week, and our police chief did put together, I thought, a good quarterly report, have, well, not, he agreed to, in the future, provide the council with quarterly reports regarding significant comments and alerts that he wants to give us regarding crime. Now, what he put together for us last week, I think we got it on December 23, was labeled, you know, not for public distribution. So, what I'm, I think all the council members know that I asked our chief to edit that report so that we can distribute it to the public. We want to inform our public on what we can inform them about and keep everyone informed about the trends. Cities our size are having problems with crime as, as they all are. It looks like we're not quite as bad as Rockford and Peoria in some categories, and other categories we are. So, that was the other item of, regarding the, the old business, the unfinished business from the past. Director Yazel wishes to inform the council on various topics, and Val, if you're available, please go forward. Was there, Alderman Hanar, you want to speak first before we get to?
Can I just, yeah, I'd just like to bring something up real quick, and I don't know how we deal with it. On the Bright New Day project that we passed a while back, it was, we were, we had it set up to where within 90 days, the unions were supposed to get their, their pension, what is it, their benefits paid. I know we are way beyond 90 days from the time that was passed. My understanding today, I was notified today that the unions have not been paid. Because of that, I'm going to ask that, that we put an immediate hold on any monies directed towards that, that project, and I actually think that we need to, they need to pay any interest incurred for the excess of the 90 days that they, they have failed to do. So, I, I don't know what's going on with it, but we, we need to get that rectified.
Raise your hand if you're surprised.
Oh, I was raising my hand to talk.
Thank you. All right. Yes, so we're talking about the three buildings on Monroe Street at the corner of Sixth and Monroe, the, the southwest corner there. I think the council, though, took the step, though, that we would release no funds, no funds at all until those prerequisites were taken, such as the paydown of the union funds. But we do need a follow-up on this to see how they're doing. I know the, the New York, New York developers were trying to raise money during a difficult time to raise money, apparently, so thank you, Alderman Hanar, for bringing that to our attention. So, Alderman Conley, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. Yeah, I'd like to know, Corporation Council, what sort of development agreement have we gotten back finalized from the, the company that is supposed to be taking this over? Because I, as, as has Alderman Hanar, I've heard that, again, that they've not paid the, the back to, benefits have not been paid to the unions. We've got, this was my whole concern with this project from the get-go, that we would approve a new project, we would get things going for this new, new company, and the old debts that wouldn't be paid, that hadn't been paid, would no longer be honored anyway. So, I, I would like to see a final copy of what the development agreement is with this corporation and what we're, what the expectations are. We need to make sure that people are held, when we're making agreements with developers and they're getting city public dollars, I, I want the details, and I'd like to see a copy of that agreement as soon as possible, please.
Certainly, yeah. And what, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Corporation Council.
Okay, sorry, I want to make sure that I'm not over, talking over anybody. I will ask them, we talked to them about a week and a half ago, and they were waiting on some tax credits. If you may recall, the entire deal is interrelated with Newmarket and historic tax credits. We can follow up and give a report, but there's no money, they have no entitlement to any money, subject to, you know, all of the requirements. So, there's nothing that's been spent, no action's been taken, they haven't received any money, nor do they have a right to do that, and their problem has been because of, they indicated at least a couple of weeks ago, that this COVID situation has really interfered with what would be a normal lender-investor situation. But we can get together, ask them for an updated report, maybe by the council meeting.
I would also like a copy, I'm sorry, I wasn't?
Alderman Conley, then Alderman Hanar, then Alderman Redpath, go ahead, Alderman, Alderman Conley.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. So, Mr. Circle, can we get a copy of whatever final agreement they've entered into with the city?
Yeah, I thought I.
Because I realize that they may have their own financing issues and concerns, but the whole deal, this whole deal was contingent, was not, I mean, just to get this deal, to get as far as they did, the contingency was that they pay back those, those monies that were, that were taken from the union's pension fund, or the benefit fund. So, I don't think, their financing aside, this whole deal going forward was, had other contingencies attached to it. So, I would like to see a copy of whatever final agreement we've entered into with them so that, I mean, there, there has to be, has to be consequences to people, to this council taking action and putting something in place in an ordinance and the expectation that, you know, the people who have worked in this city are paid. So, can we get a copy of that before next meeting also?
The, the answer is yes, of course. However, what I was going to say is that the consequence is they don't get any money. So, there's a very real consequence. Yes, they are required under both the ordinance and the various agreements that they're required to make that payment as a prerequisite before they can make any kind of a claim or go forward. And they're, they are aware of that. That's one of the discussions that took place with them was a couple of weeks ago, was to ask about the status of the financing, and so we'll get an update and find out what their timing is.
Yeah, and if we could just see a copy, though, of what the final agreement was between the city and this organization so that we know, I, I still don't have, you know, in my hands, an explanation of what, you know, what their final, our final expectations and their final agreements are. I'd like to make sure that we have that because it's, it's important when this council takes action that we have the ability to follow up on it. Thank you, and that's the end of my comments, Chair. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Madam Alderman Conley. Now, we go to Hanar, then Redpath, and then I think the, oh, Alderman Proctor wishes to speak also.
Thank you, Chair. I, I would like to know, too, have, have they paid Mr. Lawrence off on, on this particular deal before they paid the unions? I'm, I'm very concerned about this because we, I sat there, and I was a no vote on it, but everybody, they talked about how there was no issue about financing and all that. It was, they, after 90 days of approval, they were going to pay off the unions, and everybody, they sold everybody a bill of goods on this. And this project has been, has been a problem from day one, and here we are, that, once again, the unions are not getting, they're, they're not getting their benefits paid that they're owed, and, and I, I just, I mean, we, we've had another situation where we had a, had a company that they were supposed to, with the Ryan Bandy situation, that they were supposed to pay that, you know, right away. They didn't do it on that hotel. We've got to start making strict stipulations. If we have this, then they, then, then the deal's null and void, and then we get our TIF money back and they can, we can get somebody that, that we can trust on, on some of the stuff, so.
Alderman Redpath, and then Alderman Proctor.
You know, we make a contract, and we, we pass this ordinance, I think on a six to four vote, if I remember right. We pass a, we're just barely getting through the council, and we did that based on what we were told was going to happen. They were supposed to do it in 90 days, and that hasn't happened. And here's the problem. The problem is every time we let these companies skirt a little bit out of the contract here and a little bit out there, then it's going to continue. Everyone, Alderman Conley and Alderman Hanar are exactly right. We got to stop doing this stuff. When people don't, when people don't fulfill their end of the contract, we need to take, there has to be serious consequences. This is ridiculous. We got to stop doing this stuff. I want to see a copy of the agreement, too, because I, and we got more agreements coming. So, we need to see these things before we get into this mess, and this is a mess. And if they can't do it, then let's pull our sport away from it and let it, let it fold, because that's what we probably should have did in the first place, but we thought we had a contractor who was going to give us an honest answer and, and fulfill their end of the contract. We're fulfilling our end of the contract, they need to fulfill their end of it, no matter how minor or, or it is, they need to fulfill that. Thank you.
Alderman Proctor?
Yeah, hi. On this thing, I, I do would like to see an update, of course, about what's going on. And Alderman Hanar, I did ask this very question to the city a couple of weeks ago about the pending timeline, and I did receive a copy of the ordinance. I think what is tricking this up, and of course, the 90 days was the, you know, the timeframe that we wanted to go with, but from what I can see on this ordinance, and I'll pass this off to Tim Griffin really quick so everybody else could see it, but it doesn't look like this thing was finalized until November 2nd. And so, if you start the clock after November 2nd, then they still have more time. And so, I think there's some confusion about when the 90 days starts, and it might be for our intent to 90 days start a passage, but, you know, just according to, you know, I guess, legal stuff, this ordinance didn't become effective, and the redevelopment degree didn't become effective until November 2nd, when it was, looks like signed by the clerk, you know, and recorded by the clerk, and for whatever reason, it was delayed in city legal, that we were not made aware of why it was delayed, and why allow a month and a half to go by for it not to be effective. So, I guess we need some answers on why things are delayed after we think there's a rush that, you know, first it's proposed to us saying it has to happen, then we do the work, get it done, and then it sits for a month and a half. So, I would just like some clarification on why this ordinance hasn't taken effect, you know, took effect November 2nd, and then now we are demanding, I guess rightfully so, for the unions to get paid, because I was a big proponent of making that happen and make that work, and that's still the promise I think the developers have on it. But if this ordinance is not effective until, it was effective November 2nd, they still have more time. So, I would, it might be a confusing question, but there's a lot of questions there that I'd like answered on it.
Thank you, Alderman Proctor. I know some others wish to speak on this. I just want to remind everyone that, you know, I think it's reasonable to ask for the agreement, and we don't know exactly when that agreement was finalized. I know our legal staff has lost two or three more attorneys, and it's difficult to get everything done, especially when it's a complex agreement with significant obligations. I think also it's reasonable to ask for an update, which is what we're getting tonight. I think we've got to be careful about, you know, chewing the hand that feeds us, because this developer's a stranger to Springfield. They're coming in with their money before they get a dime from city government money, and we got to be careful about biting the hand that feeds us, that, you know, they're coming with their money to pay off, they want to pay off the unions. So, we're all anxious to, to get this thing going, but our obligation on the contract is to pay them TIF money, and it's TIF money going way out into the future, once the real estate tax increments come into being. So, we negotiated a very positive agreement from the city's point of view, protecting the city's interests on this, so that we're out no monies, and I, you know, compliment Alderman Proctor on that, and, and his patience in, in drawing the, 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 all the pluses together to get this thing through. I think Alderman Turner. all the pluses together to get this thing through. I think, older woman Turner, you wish to speak, and maybe some others, and let me know. And then Alderman Donlin. Thank you. Are you muted, Dor?
Sorry. I agree with everything that's been said. I think that one of the problems that we have, that is not unique to this situation, is that we, we pass ordinances that, with regard to developing, developments, and TIF monies and those things. But we never ever see the developers' agreement. So we never know what we have obligated ourselves to. And that makes it difficult for us to hold anybody's feet to the fire. Or, and I think that, I think that we should get a copy of every development agreement that is put into place, so that we know what the city has been obligated to. I think that's a reasonable request.
That's a fair request. Alderman Donlin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Elder Woman Turner, you took the words out of my mouth, and you're right on. I mean, we should not, especially when it's of significant dollars, be voting on anything, unless it's some extreme circumstances, where we haven't seen the development agreement. It's so important. But I recall, and I appreciate you bringing this up, Alderman Hanauer, I recall vividly, the developer saying that the money would be paid right away, and that there would be regular meetings, and the city, any of us, for that matter, could come and sit on these weekly meetings, where we're provided updates. And I was particularly perturbed by the comment that I heard earlier about the city having to reach out to the developer and find out the status, when they said time and time again, before all of us in the council chamber, that we would receive regular updates, and even be included in those meetings. I haven't heard a darn thing, until I got a call from another alderman today, alerted me to the fact that they may have violated the 90-day stipulation that's in the contract. My first, my first comment, my response to that was, well, when's the redevelopment agreement? When was it enacted? And nobody seemed to know that. So here we are, left in the dark again. And it's very frustrating. I didn't support this. I hope it, quite frankly, I hope we see a development that's successful, but very skeptical. And, you know, again, if you could, whoever's the contact at the city, whether it's Director Yezel, Corporation Counsel, the mayor, whomever, with this developer, let's get regular updates. Let's provide those to the council. We absolutely need to see the redevelopment agreement. And quite frankly, Elder Woman Turner, you're right on. We need to see those before we vote in the future, on any future TIF agreement in particular. Thank you.
Many good issues are being raised. I mean, we need to know when that 90 days started ticking. And, you know, if there was a delay in our Corporation Counsel's office, you know, that those things, type of things happen. I also think, I agree with you, Alderman Donlin, that the developer said that pay the union owed monies at the, at the front end, once their financing was in place. They're not going to put out money until their, their financing package is in place. And I think that's what they're working on. So I agree with you. I think that was something we asked them about. And, but until they got their financing in place, they're not going to put their money on the table for the unions. Any other, any other discussion on this?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, if I can.
Go ahead, Alderman Donlin.
I'd just like to be very, just ask a very clear question. It's been asked a couple of different ways tonight. When did the 90 days start, and when was it up? Does anybody know that, that's on this call?
Corporation Counsel will have to check on that.
No, I, I can, we'll have to check the dates.
Yeah, Corporation Counsel will check on it. One thing is, Mayor Langfield, if I may, Chair, comment?
Go ahead, Mayor Langfield.
Yep. You know, everybody should realize that we're in the middle of a pandemic. And it does rely on financing. And if anybody's been to the market, they'd understand the difficulties in that. And we should be, we're lucky that, I agree, it comes to fulfillment, because we should thank our lucky stars, especially, especially for them paying the unions and everybody else, all the back pay. They could have walked away from this deal, and they could have let it hit the bricks, as someone suggested, come back and do it at a scaled-down rate. And everybody takes a bath in it, except, they accepted the responsibility to a lot of hard work. Alderman Proctor worked hard at it. We've worked hard at it, got it to this place. The restriction of the 90 days came from the council. That's probably those ones that voted no on it. So with regards to that, we will work through it. We will, you know, we've, have that conversation. I will ask him to come and give a presentation. If someone asks a developer a question, last two times we brought him back, nobody asked a question. So if we, if you want me to come back and speak to the council, we'll have him back next Tuesday. But I don't want to bring him back, take his time out of the day. If there's no questions to be asked, I mean, that's the time to ask some of them questions. But we are in the middle of a pandemic. Once the financing's in place, they will make the payment. Otherwise, they don't get any resources from the city. That was the caveat with the agreement. So it goes hand in hand, and that's where the reports come. As far as the finances, I think they were speaking to, as disbursements are made, I think it was Abby, Abby Powell stood there and said, as disbursements are made of the TIF funds, that's when the reports are given to the council and everybody else that they agreed to. But nothing's going to be dispensed unless, you know, unless they pay the unions upfront, and then it goes from there. But financing has to be put in place. Otherwise, it doesn't go. And I know they're working towards that, especially with the tax credits. I think that's really the challenge in today's market. But if you want me to-
Thank you, Mayor.
-come next Tuesday, I'd be more than happy to ask him to come, or call in, or zoom in. But that's the, you know, I don't want to ask him to come again, when we didn't ask questions the last two times.
Fair enough, Mayor. Any further discussion? It looks like we've got several more. So I'll go back to Alderman Proctor, then Hanauer, then Connolly.
Yeah, really quick. Alderman Donlin asked a question, like, when did the 90-day clock start? And as the author of the amendment for the 90 days, my intent for the 90 days to start was when the ordinance was effective. And so the ordinance's effective time, I guess, was kind of held up on the city's side. Because at the end of the ordinance, it's pretty clear, it says this becomes effective when signed by the clerk and the mayor, and it's dated November 2nd. So obviously, didn't think it was going to be delayed that long. But that was, the intent was 90 days of when the ordinance is effective. Thanks for the clarification.
To Chair, this is Alderman Gregory.
Alderman Gregory, go ahead.
Yes, as, as a, you know, supporter of this, along with Mr. Proctor, it was my understanding that, one, they don't get the money till the project's completed, and, and, you know, that they had to take care of the union obligations. So let me ask this. If they don't meet the 90-day, and, you know, they haven't met their 90-day, getting a finance package together and all that, and we pull this project from them, if another developer comes in, do they have to agree to the same thing? I guess that would be for Corporation Counsel.
Alderman, I think that that would be dependent on the, you mean, if there was a new developer that came in? I think that would be dependent on what they were willing to do. They may or may not, you know, request TIF money. They may change the project. They may decide to do it in pieces. So it's not, it would have to be something that would have to be discussed, and finalized that way with the council.
Aren't they the owners of the building?
Yes, indirectly. They, they own the mortgage and the note, and, yes.
Current developer owns the building, as well as the Illinois building downtown.
All right, I think Alderman Hanauer, and then Alderman Connolly, is that correct? Do you want to speak further?
Well, just, just one thing. I know, you know, we, we've talked that, that the Corporate Counsel's office has lost some attorneys. And in the event, to try to prevent Jim from having a heart attack or anything from overwork, I would ask that he would bring somebody in, maybe get, he should have a line item for contractual services. And maybe we need to get, he needs to think about bringing in an outside firm to try to get things caught up for him. So he's not, you know, juggling 10,000 pieces of, of paper in the air, you know, at a time. So I think that would, that would help him out, and it might be able to get things caught up. All I care about, and I want to make it clear, it's not just the union, it was also back wages, I think, for, or back pay for electrical, and for plumbing, and work that was done. It's not just union benefits, but that, I think the union benefits was the largest part of that. There was, I think, there was some, there were some local companies that did not get paid, and they were also supposed to get paid on this whole deal. So, so it is, it's dealing with a lot of local people, and that's the only reason why I brought it up. I think that, I just want it, I just want to make sure it gets done. And I do agree, I, I guess, we've gotten a little lax about allowing agreements to, you know, us going through, and not having the agreement in place prior to us voting on it. From now on, I will not vote on a, on a project that does, we don't have the developers' agreement. That way, when it's, we vote on it, it goes into effect, everything's good. And if it has to slow things down, it has to slow things down. But we need to see that. And so, going, you know, I kind of learned my lesson here, and as going forward, I'll, that's, that's the, the way I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote on things. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yes, Alderman.
Back to Alderman Connolly.
Thank you, Chair. Mayor, thank you for your offer. I actually, if, if the developers could zoom in for the next city council meeting, I would like to hear from them, get a firsthand update on what their status is, and what their expectations are. I certainly would like to see this project succeed. That is a big part of downtown. Obviously, I was also one of the no votes on this. I have hesitations about, about how the process was handled. And I, they've been reinforced tonight. But that said, I would like this to be successful. And I would certainly appreciate hearing from the developers, and, and knowing where, you know, firsthand from them, what their status is, and what their expectations and plans are. Also, I just want to clarify with Corporation Counsel that we will be getting a copy of this developers' agreement by tomorrow, since it should already be in place, correct?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I couldn't.
Mayor, did you hear the Corporation Counsel's answer? The answer is yes. I, the mayor is shaking his head up and down.
Okay.
He's nodding his head up and down.
Thank you. And, and I just, I want to reiterate what everyone has said, and especially Alderman Hanauer. I will not vote for any agreements moving for, any, any proposals moving forward, until we have all of these agreements in place. And that includes an agreement with the developer. I, I don't think that's an unreasonable expectation to make of a developer. We don't want to make it difficult to do business in the city of Springfield. But we do need to have clear expectations. And I think once we have that, and everyone knows we're on, that we're all on the same, same playing field, this is what our expectations are for you, and this is the standard we're going to hold you to. I think that's reasonable. And so moving forward, that, that should be part of any package that we, that we get prior to voting on it. And when I say prior to voting, I mean, this is not something I want to see at 5 o'clock the night of a meeting. I think we need to all have time to give our due diligence and our review of, of what packages we are actually voting on. So I'd certainly appreciate that. And Mayor, if it's possible for them to zoom in next week, that would be great. If not, you know, we can look to the following Tuesday. Thank you.
I'm glad everyone's in agreement. We got a CDPG development agreement at the time of city council approval, because another one, a major agreement that was sponsored by several aldermen, was the hotel project at Fourth and Washington. And that was sponsored by several aldermen. And we didn't see that agreement till a month or so after city council actions. But I, so I agree with the policy we're trying to set here tonight. Any further discussion on this? This is all part of unfinished business. And so, Director Yezel, are you still available to discuss the topics of interest regarding the city small business grant program and the other items?
Yes, sir. I'm sitting here, ready and waiting.
Thank you.
Well, do, are you able to view the PowerPoint? Is that on your screen? Can you see that?
Sort of.
Can you see the PowerPoint on your screens?
Yes, we can. You go off, and the PowerPoint comes on, Director Yezel.
Okay, thank you. All right. Good evening, everyone, and council members and mayor. I'm excited this evening to come and provide an accounting of the Business Assistance Grants Program for the city. It was a quick turnaround time, and it was all hands on deck in the office. And we got an opportunity to work with a lot of businesses that afforded us the opportunity to get to know our businesses a little bit more intimately, and to understand a little more about all the challenges that they're facing. Just as a reminder, the funding sources for these grants came from the CDBG Cures Act funds for $210,000, and $420,000 came from the State Cures Act funds. City Council approved the CDBG funds in July, and in late October, I was, I was informed that we would have funds that could be available through the state if we chose to apply. So I had the grant writer apply for those funds at the first part of November. We began then creating an application process while working with ISD to build a portal, that was capable of accepting online applications, something that the city had not been able to do prior to this time. We received notification that we had received the $420,000 shortly thereafter. It was a quick turnaround time for the state, but they approved us for that $420,000 within two weeks. We launched the program on November 16th at 8:30 a.m. in the morning, and concluded the receiving applications at 5 p.m. on the 30th. A press release announcing the winners went out the 21st of December, and the first checks, that'll be about 45 checks, will be issued this Thursday, the 31st. Just a little bit of background about the process for how we awarded these grants. Once the grant was submitted, the staff reviewed for accuracy, and that all documentation had been submitted. We confirmed that businesses were within the corporate city limits. Treasurer Busher's office did double duty, checking for fines and any debts that were owed to the city. There was a narrative section, and this was graded by our Economic and Community Development Commissioners. That section constituted about 20% of the actual score. The additional 80% was automatically generated by answers, answers given by the applicants. Finally, the top 126 scoring applications were awarded. In total, we received 184 applications. We broke down those that received grants by wards, and as you can see by far, Ward 5 had the most grants, and followed closely by Ward 10. Only Ward 9 just got at least one grant. But you can see, we received applications from all across the city, and I was very pleased with that. We also broke it down according to business types. Restaurants and bars were 45, followed closely by professional services, which is 40. Independently owned, retail at 28, and indoor recreation, five, lodging, three, property management, two, and childcare, catering, and manufacturing. Each had one. We went through, I asked Abby today if she'd give me some of the comments. We had wonderful responses from our businesses. You know, given that they've had such challenges in the last nine months, I mean, we were just amazed at how gracious and kind everyone was. And these are just a few of the comments that we heard right away, as soon as we announced these, that they were, one said, "This was such good news, you made my week." Another said, "This $5,000 means my family's going to have Christmas." And finally, one said, "You have no idea what an impact this will have on us, and that we can continue to do for our community. I appreciate this so much. I will invest wisely back into business." The graciousness that we heard from these, and gratefulness from these business owners, was very heartwarming. Are there any questions?
Alderman Redpath, and maybe others, but not on my screen right now. Go ahead, Alderman Redpath.
Director Yezel, can we get a list of the people who received the-
Director Yezel, can we get a list of the people who received the grants?
Yes, sir. It went out in a press release, like I said, on the 21st, but I have that and I'll send that to you tomorrow.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
It was actually included on the email that had the PowerPoint check.
Okay.
Alderman Redpath, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Go ahead, Alderman Hanauer.
Val, one question I have is how many, how many rejections were there and how, what were the majority of the issues that, why people were rejected for this?
Okay, so we had 126 that we were able to give out. That was how much funding I had, for 5,000 for each. And we were, we had 184 applicants. The main reason was a lot of times they just didn't get back to us. They couldn't provide the information. We did go and pick up, actually went to businesses and picked up information from people. They delivered them to us and we uploaded everything. But most of the time, I would say it was they just plain did not respond to our request for additional information when we needed it, if they didn't fill out everything and have that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Alderman Gregory, I believe.
Yes. Ms., Ms. Yezel, are we anticipating any more business assistance? I know we hope, but have we, have we put our feelers out there? Have we heard anything? And if we, if we do, how will that process work next time? Are we, are we looking to try to, you know, get as many new businesses, some assistance before we, we circle back to, to the same ones? Or how will that work? Have we, have we, have we thought about that?
Well, the mayor, the mayor and I have not actually had that conversation yet. We did talk briefly last week about the additional $776,000 that the city will be getting, but, and of course, if you've been following the appropriations through Congress, the lot of funds that are coming down. So, we're very hopeful that there will be some additional funds. And we would like to see this spread a little bit more through the community if, if we were to move forward, but we haven't made that decision yet, sir.
All right, thank you, Ben. I appreciate it.
Alderman Donlin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate it. I just a couple of things. Due to some restrictions, we don't have a significant number of restaurants and, and bars in Ward Nine, but due to some of the restrictions, one particular didn't, wasn't able to, but I hope those restrictions aren't the same with the utility program. But to that end, I'd like to know if we could get a similar update that we received this evening regarding the utility program that we've implemented to assist businesses. If that would be something that could be done here coming up, that would be appreciated, Mr. Mayor or Director Brown.
Yes, CWP will be providing that next week. We'll probably have a follow-up webinar, similar to what we did with Oped, because the response hasn't been as great as what we thought. But they'll have a report next week, next council meeting.
Thank you. I mean, I know this $5,000 for the businesses in this program we're discussing tonight was, is, is very much appreciated and I know those businesses are in dire need, but let's not kid ourselves, it's not something that's going to put, you know, completely change these businesses bottom line, unfortunately, because we're talking months and months and months without consistent revenue streams and it's, it's devastating, needless to say. So, you know, if we could find any, any way, shape or form, we could work with, continue to work with our congressional delegation or whomever on trying to find ways to help businesses and hopefully with the vaccines, we can get things opened up, quote, even similar, even somewhat back to normal as soon as possible, I know everybody's gunning for. So, thank you.
Yeah, that, thank you, Alderman Donlin. That legislation which our president signed this week is gonna be huge for small business. They can borrow up to, up to $150,000, the, which is, which will be forgivable loans if they spend the money on the right expense categories. The expense categories have been broadened. That's gonna be a massive amount of money available for our small business. I think it's, the, the money is being directed at employers with, I believe it's less than 500 employees, maybe it's less than 250 employees, but in any event, it's, it's gonna be much more helpful than our $5,000 grant. It's helpful if they are. And it's, I think, Director Yezel, you did a good job in giving us the information that you did and I, it's, I think it's good to see that the bars and restaurants category was the broadest category. The most recipients were found in that category with, it looks like your chart says 45 in that category, which is one of the purposes of this, of the $5,000 grants. Director Yezel, do you have any more comments or any more comments from our, our committee as a whole? If not, I think there was another topic you wished to go to, which was the rental assistance program?
Correct, yes. Unless there's no other questions. I reached out yesterday to the Urban League to ask for an update, if they would provide a statement for us, and I'm happy to share that statement with you this evening. With the release of December payments, approximately 237 checks to landlords for approximately $208,000 in funding will be provided. Approximately 547 individuals living within these 237 households have benefited from the rental assistance program. All completed applications have been processed. The application process is still open and we anticipate increased interest following the holidays, particularly now that the Illinois Housing Development Authority no longer provides the $5,000 grant and the moratorium will soon be ending. Just as a follow-up to that, with us, we are still, just part of our process that we have to go through to ensure that we're staying in compliance. Once the Urban League turns over the, all of the names, we have to go back in through the, into the system and check to be sure everything has been entered into it. And we just got another additional 65 names today. So I'm sure they will have been spent probably two-thirds of the money that was given to them pretty, really quickly. We should be able to go through that. I talked to Joey late this afternoon and she was still going through the last 65 names that she had been submitted. Just also to remind you, our contract with the Urban League is through the end of February, so they will continue to keep processing these. And as they noted, the program with IDA really did slow them down for a while because a lot of people could get $5,000. And so they were holding back and saying, well, if I, you know, if I'm gonna get the $5,000, I don't want to accept the $1,000 because of the duplication of benefits. So, I think we're moving, moving along. If I have any other questions?
Thank you, Director. Any further questions? Is there any other, Alderman Redpath?
Director Yezel, could you explain to us the situation that's going on with the Enos TIF expansion? And what we have read is that that TIF expired and could you explain that to us, please?
Well, the TIF did expire on the 15th. We did not have the opportunity present or to get that on the veto session. Veto session was canceled and so it was unable to get put forth there. Now, we have, we're in a situation similar to what we had with the Far East TIF where it expired and, but we were able to in spring session to come forward and renew that TIF. But currently, this, you know, until we know what, what session is gonna be like, we're not sure about moving that forward.
Director, I know that the YMCA is about to send us a bill for $2.5 million that we owe them that was supposed to come out of, I guess, the combination of combining the Enos TIF to the Downtown TIF.
Correct.
Do you have any idea how we're gonna pay that?
Well, there has been some suggestions and some remedies for that, but at this particular point, I would defer to the mayor for that question.
Yeah, a couple of ways we can do. Yeah, we, going back to the county chair, you know, the whole hook, hiccup with the spring session was the letters from Capitol Township and the county and the Park District. Park District argument was $750,000 that the city council approved during budget session for the roof. They didn't, they keep harping back on that. I do have an ordinance that'll be coming forward to reimburse the TIF for that amount, $750,000. That way, we get them back on board. The other one is with regards to the Capitol Township, you know, the discussions of consolidating. And as we all know, just lay all the cards on the table, the county passed a referendum with consolidation, but that consolidation never happened. Otherwise, we probably wouldn't be having this conversation. We probably would have received the letter from the county and away we'd go. At that point in time, back in the spring, the chair said, "Well, there'll be a spring session and we'll provide a letter at that point in time." Well, lo and behold, there's, or I'm sorry, a veto session. Lo and behold, no veto session, so we're at where we're at. So, we will push forward with that in, coming up in January. And if it's, they don't have a session then, whenever the following session is, as Director Yezel had said, we'll do so, similar to what we did with the East Side TIF and asked for a extension of the Enos Park TIF. But with regards to the finances, I'd probably get with Director McCarty on that with regards to the bill. I'm not sure what the exact amount is due and when. Corporation Council might be able to add to that, but possible remedies would be, you know, fund, inter-fund transfer. You could use that, inter-fund borrowing, that's been done in previous years, way before our, our administration came in, so that's nothing out of the norm. But with the Downtown TIF, say the Enos Park TIF is not extended, that's the question is how do you fund it through Downtown TIF? The answer is with future increments. And so it's projected, I think the future increments were anywhere from $8 million to $11 million, depending on what the equalized assessed valuation is. So when you're talking about assessed valuations, it goes back to the project we discussed earlier. You want projects to get done. That's why it's important to bring the future leverage funds to today's value, so you can start doing projects, completing projects today and you can start generating those tax dollars to go to other projects. But that's how you'd be able to pay it, is through the future, future projections, using those funds or, you know, inter-fund transfer if they need funds immediately. But we'd have to check with the YIC, what they need right now as opposed to what could be, you know, I don't know, Corporate Council knows the schedule, but we'd have to check the timeline.
The bill was sent, the bill was sent over for this week. If you haven't gotten it already, it's supposed to be here. But I, I understand the debacle that came down with the COVID thing in the legislature, Mayor, but we made an obligation, obviously, you, the administration and us as a city council made an obligation that we owe those people $2.5 million and I'm worried about where we're gonna get the money. And I understand that we're gonna be looking at different areas, but I would hope you come with a plan for us to take a look at soon, so we can try to get this behind us. It'd be very important.
Yeah, people are worried about it. We have $28 million sitting in our corporate fund right now. We could just write the check and give it to them tomorrow if we need to. But I don't think that's the responsible action to take, but we'll get with Director McCarty and, or if he's on the line, he can just pipe in.
I thought, I thought he bitched.
Yeah, if he's on the line, he can, Director McCarty, if you'd like to get on and provide some options, that'd be great.
You know, before, before that, Director McCarty, you know, I think, Mayor, you raised some good issues. We want the, we want the Enos Park TIF extended and what the General Assembly likes to see to get it extended is all the local tax jurisdictions that might lose some tax revenue to get on board to approve it. And, you know, unfortunately, we didn't get help from our Park District and we didn't get help from our Capitol Township. And we need to put, you know, let those units of local government know that they're hurting our city when they get in the way of reasonable legislation, like the extension of the Enos Park TIF.
Respectfully, respectfully, Alderman, we shouldn't be making obligations, shouldn't be making contracts unless we know that we're gonna be able to come up with the money. I mean, we made a commitment to the folks and here we are again, talking about contracts. And if we can't fulfill a, a contract that we make with them, we shouldn't make those kind of deals.
Excuse me, Alderman, if I could, Mr. Chair.
We're gonna meet our obligation, just finding out the best way to meet that obligation. And that's why we have persons like our mayor and Director McCarty and our Corporation Council thinking about the best way to, to come up with the money, given the situation. And by the way, all, the entire city council, as I remember, approved the YMCA, a large amount of money going to YMCA. And we all knew at that time that the money wasn't gonna come exclusively from Enos Park, that we might have to borrow from the Downtown TIF and that we'd address that situation if it occurred. Now we've got that situation and we just have to be patient to work out the reasonable solution. And, and as far as the YMCA, they got a huge gift from the city, so I would advise the YMCA, just to be patient and memorial, just to be patient.
Yeah, but you know, Alderman, we didn't know that we were not gonna fulfill our, our obligation to get the TIF renewed. We didn't understand that when we voted on it. So the city council doesn't, it doesn't have to take the blame for this thing because we didn't understand that the, the, the renewing of the TIF and connecting it to the Downtown TIF was not gonna happen.
Well, I, I remember that conversation, but we all gotta hold hands here and try to make something positive happen. And let's not burn down things before we need to.
That's not what I'm trying to do either, Alderman. I, we all want this thing to go. We just, we gotta start remembering, we have obligations when we make contracts.
If I may, Mr. Chair.
We, we all agree with that. So we've got three persons that wanna speak next. I think Alderman Hanauer, then Alderman Proctor, and then Alderman Turner, in that order. Thank you.
I just wanna, I just wanna put out there that, I, I read that in a paper where they talked about the $750,000 for the, the roof. There was nothing improper with us using TIF money for that. As a matter of fact, at the time, we were suffering, we were in a very bad budgetary situation that our colleague that, that is now on the Park Board also voted for. So, I'm sure that's where it came up at the Park Board. And I would remind everyone that, that, that our colleague that was an Alderman that is now on the Park Board, he voted for it and I think he was in the early conversations when it came down to, to, you know, us doing it. So, but there was nothing improper. It's all, it was all part of, and I'll, I can defer to Alderman Donlin on this. He knows TIF a lot better than I do, but it was all proper. And I think that, that it's been alleged that there was things that were improper about that, about using that money for the roof and, and there wasn't. So, but Alderman Tylinn at the time was a big part of that whole thing. So I don't want him to think that he can get off of this thing scot-free.
Yeah, that's right. It was a policy decision and we shouldn't, you know, hold grudges just 'cause now if someone wants to think that the roof idea was a bad idea, that's not a, in my opinion, a valid reason for the Park District to try to penalize the city of Springfield. Alderman Proctor and then Alderman Turner.
Yeah, thanks, Chairman. It, it's rumored that the legislative session's gonna come back next Friday on January 8th for a small veto session until the 13th or the 12th. Is it possible to get, I guess, the agreement from the Park District if we're gonna be paying the facts on the corporate fund, that yes, they will provide a letter and then we can have that in place for, to try to, you know, sprint to get this done during the veto session if they do come back January 8th? I guess that question's directed to the mayor and Val Yezel.
Yeah, that's, Park District, I think, would be able to, have to talk to Leslie Scro, but I guess someone would have to talk to Treasurer Joey though, who serves as the administrator of the county, as well as the Capitol Township. I mean, that's really the hiccup, my estimation. I think we'll get the Park District. That won't be a problem, especially when we had conversations with them. We told them we would use the TIF funds in those areas, like for Enos Park, for instance. The taxes may have been generated for the park tax would go towards the parks in that area. And so that's another way to get their approval. But Capitol Township's really the hiccup and the frustrating part, as we all know, it's coterminous with the city of Springfield boundaries. And, you know, to have this type of stalling tactic is pretty frustrating. I mean, I think one of the Aldermen had mentioned that you have to look at the broad picture instead of the silo that you live in. And unfortunately, they're not doing that and they should take that into consideration because as the city goes, so do the taxing bodies. And Enos Park is on the cusp, as we all know, or if you haven't, you should drive through that. Alderman Redpath brought up the Y. That was the, we appreciate the council's support of it because you would not have a $30 million Y project during a pandemic. I don't know of any other cities that can point to that. So we are gonna fulfill our obligations and the reason we can fulfill our obligations is because of the tough can fulfill our obligations is because of the tough decisions I pushed through on that tough budget that Alderman Hanauer spoke of. I'm the one that presented the tax increases. That wasn't easy to do. And, you know, people voted no against it. That's right. People came after me during an election, threw it up in our faces, but we did the right thing. You look at today's balance and Director McCarthy needs to get on and tell everybody what the balance is. We are in great financial shape due to the actions we took as a council. So you can shirk the responsibilities or talk tough on that. The reality is, we will pay that bill. We stand true to our obligations. And that's why we continue to cut the line on employment. We didn't escalate employment like other administrations. We held our, we tightened our belt during this year, thanks to the staff and the employment. You just mentioned Corporation Council. I had mentioned a few council meetings ago how stressed he was, but, you know, Alderman had special requests that he even said weren't legal to do, but they had him go on this wild goose chase, doing extraordinary activities when the activities should have been spent elsewhere. So we don't take this lightly. They'll get their money. They haven't called us. So evidently, some of you Aldermen have a direct line to somebody. So if they, just like other activities, people need to pick up the phone and call the mayor directly if they're not getting the answer they think they should. Real simple.
Well, that's a good point, Mayor Langfelder. I mean, this is the way government's supposed to work. You're the head of our government and you're the proper person to be called by YMCA or whoever. And the communication should go to you directly. If they've got a financial issue they're working through, the YMCA, they should be talking with our mayor and, and let our mayor know what the exigency is, what the severity of their financial cash flow is. That's who, where the communication should go. And then our mayor will give us the priority that it deserves among all the other priorities that have been set. We've got to be united here and speak well of our city when we can. Who else want to speak on this topic? Alderman Turner?
So I know that the, this was initially set for, to be done at the end of session in May or June. So is there a time, timeline by which we're working against to get the TIF renewed? I mean, I don't think it can just go on indefinitely. So is there a timeline?
Just, just, this is Corporation Council. The legislature has rather routinely retroactively extended TIFs. That's been a practice because of these very reasons. And when they do this, what they'll end up doing is they'll have a single bill that might have 30 or 40 or 50 TIFs on it. So the process is not time sensitive in the sense that as long as it's done in the next session, they can retroactively approve the extension. And I think the mayor indicated that there had been discussions with the park district. There's good progress there. There's not been, the county did ultimately send a letter for approving or supporting the extension of the Enos Park TIF. However, there's been no communication from capital township.
So, so this can, so this could actually happen at the end of next session and we'd be okay?
That, that is correct. In other words, if it happens in the next, during this upcoming session, and of course, we have no clear understanding of what those dates are. They had originally planned on, I think, having a veto session in November. However, that ended up getting pushed back. Then we were told there was not going to be any veto session. And then just recently, there was a discussion, they might do something for three or four days in January. So right now, I don't think there's a clear picture on how the spring session will go. However, if it is passed in the spring session, it can be retroactive.
Corporation Council, what happens, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Alderman Redpath.
Corporation Council, what happens if the other government entities don't sign off on it?
Well, all of them, we, the, the city has received letters from every single taxing body with the exception, as was mentioned earlier, Park District, of which there's an agreement in process being worked on now. And there's been no communication from capital township. So we could end up in a situation where we have all of the letters except capital township. Historically, if you have 90% of the support of the taxing bodies, then it's considered to be acceptable. However, interestingly, the statute, the TIF statute does not require the letters. That's simply something that the legislators have done as a matter of informal policy.
So there's an opportunity to get in on this veto session that Alderman Proctor talked about?
Well, that, that would be up to the, to our legislators.
But there's a chance we could do that is what I'm asking, Corporation Council?
Correct, yes. We can't force, we cannot force them, we cannot.
And we had, and we had conversations with Senator Menard or, or Representative Thu.
Butler, Marston.
Well, have we had conversations with them about moving this forward during the veto session? Because I thought that I read, I read an article that, that was kind of murky about whether that was a possibility. So have, have we had conversations with the legislators that would be handling this legislation?
We had conversations with regards to the fall veto session, but not this session coming up since that one was canceled. But we will follow up with that.
Thank you, Mayor. Alderman Proctor?
Yeah, Alderman Turner, a couple of weeks ago, I talked to Senator Menard and he said he would help, he would definitely do this if the letters were there. And I asked him about also about, you know, having all the letters. And I think he said that, he echoed what Corporation Council Zurko said about, you know, the percentages and stuff. So you don't need to have them all, but it's a good idea to have them all as much as you can. But I have one quick question. Does, does the sanitary district count as a property tax district? Do we consider it also? Or is it just capital township that we're missing after park district?
Alderman, it's my remembering right now, I believe all letters have been received except park district, although there's, there's a, as mentioned earlier, as mentioned by the mayor, there's an agreement kind of in process to address that. The only one I think we will end up being missing is capital township. I believe we have all of the others.
Okay. So we've been on unfinished business and kind of maybe this was new business. Are there any other unfinished or new business items to address? It looks like we got three hands up. We got Alderman Turner, then Hanauer, then Donlin, then Alderman Gregory, did you, have you raised?
Yes, I did.
And then Redpath. Okay, so we got, let's go in that order. Alderman Turner, please. Thank you.
Okay, I have three things. I received calls from individuals who live in the Pillsbury area that were complaining that they had not seen their NPO or had not had any contact with, with her. So could, so could someone from the police department reach out to her and ask her to contact the neighborhood association for an introduction or some contact because they were pretty upset about it? I think that they had a very good working relationship with their previous NPO and they're, they're kind of upset that they haven't had that contact with this one. And then the, the second thing is Forest Avenue from Clear Lake going north has really started to become a major fly dumping ground. So, and I know that that's a kind of a tricky area because we have part of it, the township has part of it. So if we could just see if someone can go out and, and, and check that out and see what we can do about getting it, getting it cleaned up, that would be great. And then lastly, this is not a question or the initiation of a conversation, so I, I'm not eliciting a response. But this morning at about 10:35, I sent an email to Corporation Council Zurko, Mayor Langfelder, and Val Yezel. And the subject matter was one that I had sent several previous emails. I did not receive a response to any of those or the one I sent this morning. So, you know, as a Springfield Alderman who represents 10,000 constituents, and I also wear additional hats where I represent additional constituencies, I really feel that I deserve a response, even if the response is simply, I'm not going to respond. Thank you, Alderman McMenamin.
And before we move on, I thank you for bringing up the NPOs. Our Springfield Police Department, they got to notify all the Aldermen when the NPOs shift. That is something that should be automatic. It's been done in the past and this time was overlooked. And we can't let that type of overlooking to take place. I think, I believe Alderman Hanauer, you're next.
Yeah, thank you. I've got something real quick. I, I, I want to just alert people with the upcoming session, I believe one of the items that they're looking at addressing is Zoom legislative sessions. And the potential, you know, I hope that, that they would, they would follow kind of what we do where they can only do Zoom sessions when there's an emergency order by the governor or whatever. But if this is, if this goes forward and it, that's not included in it, the, the fiscal impact to our city could be astronomical. I, I can't tell you, Scott Doll would, would probably be able to tell you more what it does to, for, for the legislative session does for our hotels and our restaurants especially. And I just want to make sure somebody is aware of this and that we have, that we're talking to people to make sure that, that if it does pass, that it does pass under the guise that it has to be an emergency order because we don't, we need the people from, from Chicago to come down here. We need the people from Southern Illinois to come up. And if, if, if they all stop coming and they're, they're doing it virtually like we are, we, we've got some major problems. So that's all I've got.
Thank you, Alderman Hanauer. And we want those General Assembly members to come and empty their pockets here, their wallets. And Alderman Redpath, go ahead.
If I could follow up, I, I did talk to Representative Murphy today about this same issue because it's really going to be detrimental to the city if we lose legislators who are going to zoom in and, and not come down here. That legislation failed by one vote last time. So that's why it's back up again. And he thinks that it's a strong possibility that it will pass. So we really need to urge our local legislators, Senator Menard, down to our representatives, to oppose that bill to help us because I think it's going to really hurt us financially in our hotels and, and obviously them coming down here. So I, I, I agree with Alderman Hanauer. I, I hope we have, I hope, I hope Scott Doll and, and, and Director Yezel can work together and try to put together a lobby to go over there and try to stop this. It's going to hurt us.
That's right. We got to put our city first on these kinds of things. Alderman Gregory, and I hope I didn't, we didn't skip over anybody. Then Alderman Donlin.
Yes, I, I just wanted to go over a couple of things. I have a, and, and Nate and our Public Works team, but, and this is more so for our mayor. You know, I, I hear a lot of conversations about our restaurants. We, we've had a lot of action going on to really work for our restaurants, and that's really, really important in our city. And we have a, a bar slash restaurant over here on the east side that, you know, the, the man's, you know, working diligently on, on, on his business, trying to save it. It's a longstanding business on the east side. And, you know, I, I, I really just feel like, you know, we're stagnant in, 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 in a response to him to get his situation cleared up so he can, he can really get business going in his, in his establishment like everyone else. You know, he's, he's, he's hurting like everyone else. And, you know, he's went through some things and corrected some things. And, you know, you know, I've been over there a few times and the information that I've received and the understanding that I have, it shouldn't be this hard to, to really close up our, 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 our section of it and, and let him deal with the county if he needs to do that. You know, and, and if there's something that, that is just, I'm not understanding, you know, I expect a call back or, or somebody to give me a buzz and say, hey, this is the situation, this is what we can and this, and I do. Because currently, I just stopped over there a few days ago and we're still at the same situation and we haven't moved forth. And, and I know he's ready to move forth. Secondly, you know, I, I talked to a constituent, you know, from this community today and, and, and who, you know, really chewed me out because, you know, a lot of, a lot of what we talk about up here on our council is, is, is different restaurants, different businesses and things. And, and, and they feel like we're losing sight of, of, of people who are scared. You know, there's, there's a lot of people dying. There's a lot of mixed information coming out. We have, you know, on one, one end, we have a governor that's, you know, being advised by our health director, you know, Harvard graduate, been a medical director at multiple places, very smart young lady. And then we have other people that's pointing other sciences. So, you know, when we're up here, you know, there is a lot of, of our constituents that are very, very confused and some of the messages come from us. And, and I think we got to be careful with that because we do have another side of this thing that are not business people, that are normal people, that, that are just trying to live so they can go to work. And, 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 you know, a lot of people who are just, as long as they can wake up the next morning, they have breath in their body, they'll figure everything else out, you know, during this pandemic. And, 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 you know, I, I just want us to, to, to not lose sight of just normal, everyday people, you know, as, as well as our bars and our restaurants and, and, you know, other industries that have been affected by this. And we told, you know, I totally get that, you know. But, but for me as Alderman on this council, you know, I want to make it very clear. I know, you know, everyone has a voice, but I want to make it very clear. I support our bars, you know, and restaurants and anyone else that's been, been, been affected by this pandemic. And, and we're trying to be very creative. We're trying to push it. We're trying to promote you until we can get you back open. None of us really have control over when we get, get, get these bars and restaurants open. I appreciate everybody advocating, but, but again, we have to, we have to be careful because we all got constituents and some of them serve different purposes. You know, have, have some different outlooks that we have to consider also. And thirdly, and lastly, today I received a, a, you know, a message from a constituent. And, and it was, it was a list of things that our, our friends who are experiencing homelessness over at our Salvation Army are in need of. I, I consistently see not only that community, but, but different employees and, and, and people who really care about that population have, have, you know, various concerns, not, not on the treatment of the individuals, but, but just on some of the needs that, that I, I don't think we should be there yet. You know, I, I think they should have enough to sustain. I think some of the things that they're asking for, you know, should be handled within that money. So I don't know what we need to do. But I think when we visited this situation to provide that warming center, we originally wanted to do 250,000. I know we cut it to 190. So, you know, Mr. Zurko, you may need to help me with this, but I need to know what we need to do to, to produce the ordinance to give them the rest of this money. I believe it's like 60,000 from, from that fund so they can provide for those people everything that they need as far as, especially things that clean the floors, that, that, that keep them sanitized, stinking water. You know, it, it's just getting ridiculous how much, you know, they're in need and, and, and we cut this, cut this thing by, by, by 60,000. So, you know, I don't know if we need to do an emergency passage or, or what, but something needs to be done to, to get the rest of that there and, and then we could go from there.
Well, thank you, Alderman Gregory. And I know Captain Eddie of the Salvation Army should be watching the situation carefully. I know he's on vacation right now. They typically go on vacation for two weeks after Christmas at the Salvation Army, but we got to get him back before the council if he needs more money. I believe Alderman Donlin, you wish to go next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just one request regarding.
Hold on, one sec. Can I say this real quick? I'm sorry, Mr. Donlin. But I don't think he has to, I don't, I don't, and I respect you, Mr. Chair, but I don't think we got to get Captain Eddie back. I'm saying as an Alderman that, that I would like Mr. Zurko to help me produce the ordinance to get the folks the rest of the difference. That's what I would like. Whether Captain Eddie comes or not, or says he needs it or not, these people need it. I see it every day. I'm tired of walking in there hearing this. And, and I think it's ridiculous that, that we don't respond to give them what they need. So I apologize. So I apologize. And Alderman Donlin, please continue. I apologize, sir.
No apologies needed. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to circle back with the TIF topic, my memory was jogged. Back in the warmer months, we discussed as a council, one of, regarding the downtown TIF, that there was going to be some bonding and/or borrowing done to basically infuse development sooner than later. And if we can at the next committee of the whole, if we can have an update on where we are regarding the research that was being done into those issues, I would certainly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Donlin. And I understand, Corporation Counsel, you heard the request that we want some update on the various methods to get more money into the downtown TIF, I believe, or, and other TIFs as well. Any other new or old business?
Yeah, Deputy Assistant Chief Scarlett would like to address some of the comments made, I believe.
And Mr. Chairperson, I'd like to speak at some point too. Thank you.
Who was the, who was the last voice? Sorry.
Director McCarty.
Thank you, Director. So go ahead, Deputy Chief Scarlett.
Mr. Chair, thanks. This is Assistant Chief Scarlett, Mayor. Thanks for getting me in there. I apologize. I just wanted to follow up on a previous topic from Alderwoman Turner. Alster Solomon is the newest MPO up in Beat 100, one of the very special NPOs that we have. She's a great officer, and I'll ensure that she gets up there and meets those folks. Again, she is one of our best officers, and I, I know that she'd be more than willing to do whatever she can do to help out Pillsbury folks. And Alderman McMenamin, to your point, will ensure that in the future when we have new NPOs, that each member of the council is well aware of who they are and how they can contact them. So thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, Assistant Chief Scarlett. Director McCarty?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to comment, and the mayor had asked me to mention something earlier about what we can do. There was concern about paying for the Y bill if it comes in. The easiest thing to do would be to simply talk to the Y to see if they can take a partial payment and wait for the rest of it until the increment comes in. If that isn't acceptable to them or if that's not going to work for them. The other easiest thing we can do is simply do, as the mayor mentioned, an interfund borrowing from either corporate, or we could even use Fund 95, doesn't matter. They're all kind of considered general funds. And then we would just simply pay it back at the end of the year as the increment comes in for downtown TIF. And if in the future we're able to renew the Enos Park TIF, then we can just also pay that portion back once that increment comes in, back into corporate or back to the downtown TIF. So it, it isn't without precedent. We've done it before, even like the mayor said, predating even me. There was a loan that was made, I think it was the Far East TIF, that was paid back from the Far East TIF to corporate over time. We completed that repayment several years ago, but it is something that has been done before, and it would be relatively easy to do. So I just want the council to be rest assured that we are able to pay the Y bill. That's not going to be a problem. And then the only other thing I'll mention is we can wait till next week, or I can just tell you real quick about the options for the downtown borrowing of the TIF because I was the one that looked into it. And really, there's three options there. One, we can do a private placement of debt, which was the least expensive if we were going to do something like that, go to an outside source. I looked at commercial lending like we do with our equipment loans. That was a bit more expensive from an interest rate perspective. But really, the easiest thing goes back to, again, we can just, we, we can do an interfund borrowing, either short or longer term, and pay that back over time. If the council and the administration have some projects that they wish to do sooner rather than later, and there's an upfront payment or a payment that's required more quickly that can't be worked into the contract saying, we'll pay it back as the increment comes in or as we get it in over time based on cash flow, then we can just simply do another interfund borrowing and pay that back. There's certainly a couple of funds that I mentioned earlier that do have the capacity to do that, and that wouldn't cost the city any interest. So that would be the way that I would recommend, should the mayor and the city council wish to go that direction.
Thank you, Director, for offering those options for the YMCA and also for borrowing against future increments for the downtown TIF. Alderwoman Turner?
It's not really my call to make because I'm, I'm not the mayor or the budget director, but I would not, I would, I would not look favorably upon contacting the Y and asking them if they will take a partial payment or if they would defer payment. It's, it's a, an obligation that we made, that we incurred. And when people do their budgets, especially with a project of this volume and nature, when people do their budgets, they pencil in that money because they know that it's coming. And so I, I think that that would be inappropriate for us to, to make that ask.
Yeah, as you know, I allow my directors to speak their mind. That's not my opinion, that's Director McCarty's opinion. If they need the money, like I said, we can write the check tomorrow, write out of the corporate fund and have it reimbursed when we renew the TIF or the infrastructure fund, but it'll all have to come before the city council.
Alderwoman Connolly, go ahead, Alderwoman.
Thank you, Chair. Director McCarty, you can probably answer this as we're, we're talking about transfers from funds and our ability to, to write checks. We did defer payment on the extra payment that this council had passed an ordinance to deal with the police and fire pensions. I just want to put this out there. We, we said we would come back and revisit that in January. So I just want to make sure that as we're, we're having these conversations, we're, we're also including that payment that we've already committed to, that we deferred once, that is, needs to be part of our conversations moving forward.
Alderwoman Connolly, yeah, actually, in my report that I gave, what, a week or two ago, I had mentioned that, that in the numbers that I provided to the council, and I know you had a hard time seeing the presentation, don't know if you got a chance to look at it or not, but I did mention during that presentation that we had, the numbers reflected the going forward and making that payment. So even with that additional payment, we're looking at a, a potential surplus. And with that surplus, we are looking at ending the, this particular year, assuming all things are equal, we're looking at ending with, once again, the highest fund balance that we've had in the corporate fund pretty much ever. So we're in decent shape there.
Thank you, and I appreciate that there, Mayor, as you pointed out earlier, there was, there was some, there were corners that were cut with, there were some, you know, the, the whole city did, did a lot of work to make sure that we would get to this point. I, I would just like to, I want to make sure that we don't forget that that ordinance with the extra payment is still something that needs to be addressed. And, and I, I did see that you included that payment in, in your presentation, but I have not heard yet what the plan is for getting that, those funds brought back before the committee, the council, and I would just wanted to put that reminder out there.
Sure, certainly. I think Incorporated Counsel can correct me, but I believe that the council simply just left that ordinance in committee, if I'm not mistaken, and they could just pull it off at any time they wanted to, to move it forward. Is that accurate, Corporation Counsel, if I'm not misspeaking?
I would have to check. I, I don't recall if it's already in committee.
And I, and I apologize. I, I do sometimes lose track of all the ordinances that are yet in committee, so.
It's easy to do.
Yes, it is.
It's easy to do.
But again, we, we've, we've had a lot of conversations tonight about commitments and, and obligations that, that the council has made. And, I mean, obviously, Alderman Gregory and I were not part of the council when the commitment to the YMCA was made. But I believe in honoring, honoring commitments that, that prior councils made also. So, you know, I, I think I also want to just, at this point, echo Alderwoman Turner's concerns that we not foist off obligations that we've already made or ask the people who in good faith move forward on a major investment in our community to wait. You know, this is, these are important considerations, and the council's, a council's word needs to count for something. To that end, and I did, I'll send an email to Council Coordinator Griffin, but some of the concern here seems to be with delays in when ordinances are finalized and signed. And I'm just wondering if maybe we as a council need to consider looking at some sort of an advanced tracking system so that we know when ordinances we passed have been signed, what this, what their status is, and then moving forward, giving us a little more of an obligation in tracking and ensuring that the actions that we take are followed up on. And I'm going to kind of flesh this out a little bit more, but I, I'm, I'm still concerned that we were, we're having a conversation about an ordinance that we passed, I don't know how many months ago, and finding out from Alderman Proctor that, that wasn't, it didn't go into effect until November. So I have some concerns about that, but thank you, Chair. I'm finished now.
And you're correct that the pension ordinance is, ordinance 2020-406 for the additional payment to police and fire. It's in, being held in committee. Any additional comments on their new and old business? There were no, if, if not, there were no citizen requests to address the council that I'm aware of. And under current circumstances, we can't hold an executive session by Zoom. We haven't figured that out yet. So is, is there a motion to adjourn? Multiples, all those in favor, say aye. I'll be safe and enjoy two more days in this calendar year, and all the best in 2021.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Better New Year.
Yes.
Happy New Year.